Commissioner Dunicic?
Here.
Commissioner Schreie?
Here.
Commissioner Horowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Roddy?
Here.
Okay, please start with the motions, please.
It's breaking up a little bit.
My vote is to the right. I just say for America, to the Republic of the Towns.
One nation.
God, we're sold with liberty and justice for all. And time is there any public comment?
Um, and no, no correspondence really to, uh, to point out tonight.
You want to just kind of take over, John?
I think so. It looks like, um, she's having some technical difficulties. So let's just run through these consent calendar items. Uh, we have minutes from both the public hearing and the April 15th voting meeting. Um, if there's not any questions, we'll make a motion to approve them.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second.
Do a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes passed. Uh, next would be payment of the bills, item B. Um, do I have a motion to pay the bills for April?
Yes, move, make the motion.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
If those are paid, um, I've included, uh, just a, a document that shows our, our bank balances. Um, as always, these links are open after the fact, so you can go back and, and take a look at them. Uh, they show our bank accounts as a 511. Item D, under consent items, this is new, it just came to us today. Uh, the real estate tax collector, Mr. Byber, reached out, um, and provided me with a list of, um, refunds that he'd like to issue. The spreadsheet that's attached, it's kind of hard to read, um, but it lists the, uh, who the refunds would go to, their address, and, and roughly what the, the rationale would be. I thought that was something that you guys should, um, should take a look at and not just, uh, you know, administratively, um, pass. But these just came today, so I really didn't have a chance to, to fact check them or do anything. But he's going to process those and just wanted to make sure that you guys had that information where we're aware. Is there any questions on, on any of those?
No, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're much better.
Yeah.
Finally, okay, we're good.
Alright, great. So we wrapped, we wrapped up the consent calendar items and are now, we're at number eight.
You want to go ahead with the permit reports?
Sure, building permit reports. Um, you're welcome to click on the link. I think what you'll see are, are just about a hundred percent of residential applications, uh, some single family, um, applications for new construction. Basically, things are starting to trickle back to normal. We did have a lot of requests for, you know, um, uh, individual home projects, uh, recently, and we're starting to see the, the builders ramp back up, so, um, that's a good sign. But at your leisure, you can take a look at the building permit details. Communications and community development, um, I'll let Andrea touch upon the highlights. Um, I will say, um, she did a great job, uh, Andrew did a great job of getting out, uh, what I'll call, you know, a mini newsletter that was giving some real good updates on, on, um, how COVID has changed operations for the township and what, highlighting what services are, are open and available to the public. And we do believe that we'll be able to have, uh, all, if not the lion's share as a process of, of this emergence. But, um, Andrea, are there any items you'd like to, uh, to touch upon? I'll pull your report up.
Yes, thank you. Um, on the newsletter, just FYI, if you do, um, factor in postage and printing, the cost per copy was 32 cents. Um, and as John mentioned, we will, um, aim to get that reimbursed through Pima. Also, I want to mention that, um, since the last commissioners' meeting, our co- is the second most popular webpage, second to the homepage. About seven percent of our total visits have been, um, to that page. Sixteen percent of our total visits have been to our emergency alert center. So people really are using the website as a resource for information during this time. Also, um, I did start today on putting together videos and photos, um, for an online Memorial Day tribute. The Memorial Day Parade this year is canceled, and the county's putting together something countywide, and then we'll have our own township-focused, uh, video also, just paying a, a tribute, um, to that commemoration. That's all unless there's any questions.
Have we started working on anything to outline, you know, now that we go to yellow, the yellow phase, starting on Friday? Is there anything, have you started working on anything to update the website? I know I've been getting a lot of questions from residents about what they can and can't do, and what the yellow phase exactly means. Outside of just park and recreations, because this is parks and recreations. But like the township building, you know, how are we going to proceed under yellow? And what services, if any, are we going to open up or, you know, start moving forward with?
Um, John Barrett and I discussed this today. Did you want to talk a little about that, John?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I did pull up, uh, a visual, so, you know, to answer your question, Commissioner Roddy, we've, we've been trying to, to seek out as much guidance as we can from either, um, you know, the, the state or, um, agencies within the state, like the, the PRPS, to try to, um, understand how things are moving. Basically, right now, with the move to yellow, um, we're still going to maintain, at least the, the read on our guidance is, is that the building will remain, remain in its current condition, uh, closed to the public. We would look to open that, open the building to the public when we transition from yellow to green. And the same really can be said for most of our, our park facilities. They're, they're in the, a pattern where, um, while we are yellow, um, for us to, to be able to, to truly open to the public, including restrooms and pavilions and playgrounds and those types of things, um, for everyone's safety, we feel like green would be the best opportunity to do that and, and, uh, to, to hold on, um, uh, for, uh, to, for any changes until we have, uh, more information. But, um, that, that's certainly up for, for some debate, if, if anyone has any, any feelings about that, because we, we are getting a lot of questions, um, from residents who want to visit a park or want to, you know, are asking us if tennis courts are open or various aspects of the parks are open. And it's challenging for us, because as much as we want to say yes, we really do want to err on the side of caution and try to follow guidance, uh, that, that basically says, um, we should wait until, um, we're in the green phase. We've also been keeping in touch with our surrounding neighbors to make sure that, um, we're consistent and that, you know, there isn't, uh, a situation where a park or a facility of some kind is open in a neighboring community, but not in South Fayette. So we just want to make sure that there's some consistency, but, um, um, I know what you're saying. There are questions about what does that mean for, for businesses and what types of businesses can open. And, and you may have more information on that than, than we do, Glenn, just with your position with, um, the representatives. So, um, you may have shared this with us, or Andrea, maybe you've provided it to me, but I thought this visual, um, really did a good job of showing what changes from red to yellow, and then again, what would change when we move into green. But so information like this will be housed on, on that COVID page. And in terms of our facilities, um, you know, we're, we're looking to, to incorporate more employees back in the office, and, and more of the municipal services are opening back up, but we're still going to stay at the closed to the public and the, um, and the facilities being, um, off limits.
Okay. I did, I shared that with you yesterday. I also shared the governor's order with you that just kind of outlines, you know, if you do open during the yellow phase, what, what the requirements are. So it's, it's the cleaning procedures, it's the masks, it's the, um, number of people in a certain space distancing, those kind of things too. But I just thought maybe we could put something on our website, as like a quick glance for residents to say, here's how the township, we all internally know, you know, what we're doing, but the public doesn't necessarily know what we're doing. So if we can do something, put something on the website that outlines township building, don't plan on being opened until the green phase. Senior center, parks, all of that, I mean, it spells it out there pretty well. But just to reinforce and confirm that we are following the guidelines of the township, and we, that's how we are going to operate as well. I don't know if anybody else has anything either.
Yes, we can absolutely do that tomorrow, so it's, um, gets sent out and posted prior to Friday when the phase changes.
Like I'm getting a lot of, um, calls from residents who live in a plan that may be part of their HOA board, or maybe their plan has, um, pools, recreation facilities, and they're, they're all looking to township for guidance to say, you know, can we open, should we open, if we open, is enforcement going to be in place, those kinds of things. So I think it would clear it up for everybody.
Okay. Uh, anything else related to communications or community development, Andrea, that you'd like to add or, or, or that you'd like to ask?
Okay.
Next, we have Parks and Rec, and, and there's not a lot of activity on those reports, but I think, you know, that was a good segue that we just had, because, um, we do have some, uh, decisions to make with regards to some of our normally planned, um, Parks and Rec activities. Most notably, um, our summer camp program, um, is certainly in jeopardy at this point. We view the message from, from the governor's office to read that a camp, uh, that would take place in a, in a public park would not be permitted until we're into that green phase. So what we've done for the time being is for the, the, the camp, um, sessions that were to run early June, we have canceled those. We have not made a decision on the later programs with our, our thinking basically being, we will open them if we're in a, if the county's in a green phase and we're able to do that. But at this point, it's hard to predict when that might be. So I know that can be a little, um, frustrating to the public, but that really is the only, uh, the only option we have right now.
Anything else? Any meetings with the Community Day group, anything from them?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we did have, there was a call with the, uh, Community Day Association just to check in, given where we are in the world right now, and, um, the thought that, that they had was, was basically to try to identify some options, um, for the township. You know, one thing that is a, a little fortunate is, uh, as opposed to other communities, is that the event is planned for later in the summer, so the end of August versus, you know, a, a June or July event. You notice communities like Brentwood, um, closing their, their, uh, Fourth of July, uh, parade and their activities. You know, this would be about six weeks after that. But there's still a lot of uncertainty around that. The committee thought that one, one alternative may be to look at a later date in 2020, perhaps an October date, where we could hold, uh, a version of Community Day. Granted, it may not be quite as large, or we might not have, um, the same kind of weather, but, um, rather than just, um, just canceling, postponing to an October date might be an option. We also tried to identify a time when we thought we had to make that decision, thinking that, um, uh, for the event to, to go off the way we'd like it to, um, and to get the coordination with volunteers and vendors, we probably need, um, about two months, I would say, of, of planning to, to pull that off. So we're thinking that, you know, about mid-June, the time we get together as a board, and the month of June might be a time when, you know, we, we look to formally make that call. Obviously, between now and then, we want to hear, um, what you guys have to say and, um, pay attention to what's coming out of the, the governor's office and, and, you know, the, the county with, uh, with the reopening phase. But, uh, those are some options we have now. I mean, there's still a chance that we could hold this in August. And, and, uh, you know, we're, we're kind of waiting to see how things evolve, but, um, one alternative might be to, to push it out, uh, till October. Anyone have any thoughts on that? On the Community Day and, and the later date for it?
I think we still have time.
Would that include like fireworks? You would incorporate the fireworks in during Community Day?
I think we could, you know, and, and, you know, unrelated but related, uh, to events is our Fourth of July celebration. Typically, we don't do, um, a large celebration, but do, do have fireworks that we collaborate with, uh, Upper St. Clair Township on. And that might be something that, um, we, you know, we, we could, we, i- if we didn't have it on the Fourth of July, for obvious reasons, then we, 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 we could postpone it and wrap it around Community Day later in the year. So that certainly is an option. I did reach out to, speaking of Fourth of July, I did reach out to our, um, our contractor. It's, we, we have a multi-year contract with American Fireworks Company for that display, and, you know, that contract provides dates, uh, where we'd have to give notice for cancellations and whatnot. And we're, we're past that 60-day notice, so I wanted to contact them just to see what our options were. And they were very flexible, and basically what they told us was, you know, by the middle of June, if we can let them know about July 4th, um, they would appreciate that. And if we opted to select a different date, uh, for any time in the, in the year 2020, that they would allow us to reschedule that at no additional charge. They also said that they could make the display be a hundred percent aerial, which would, which would launch the fireworks at a higher elevation, uh, which would make them visible from a greater distance, and maybe, uh, could, uh, have larger parts of the community that could benefit from it. But I, I think that is also going to be a decision that we look to make, um, you know, in the month of June as well, and keep tabs on what other communities are doing and, um, how we'd like to proceed.
Oh, may I add just one comment, John?
Yeah, please.
Just, just for the general understanding, and a, a big consideration, um, with something like Community Day versus just fireworks, like we normally do on the Fourth of July, is the immense amount of planning, as John alluded to, that Community Day takes. So, you know, there's, there's, um, there's months and months and months of planning, taking money, having more contracts for entertainment, so that's a, that's a big consideration as we move forward, as well as, um, you know, just how we would or wouldn't start that type of process.
I understand that, but if we're talking moving everything to October, one, it gets dark out a lot earlier, and two, it could be as simple as just adjusting the time for Community Day instead of starting it's earlier. Maybe we push the time from 12 to 2 and adjust the contracts accordingly that way. I don't think it would be that hard.
No, I think you could be pulled off.
I don't mind how, how much planning goes into Community Day, but something like that, I don't think would be too difficult.
And I think we also have to just come to terms with the fact that, at least for this year, Community Day, if we have it, is going to look a little different, right? It might not be the same type of, of gathering that we normally have, but, um, uh, I, I think we would, at least speaking on stats, we, we would like to hold some type of community event. We think, you know, we really need it, right? We really need some good news and some reason to celebrate. Obviously, we want to keep everyone safe, so we don't want to, you know, just, uh, roll out the same type of program. But if we can get creative and find ways to keep people safe and, and use our parks and, and use things like fireworks to show some community pride, I think we want to try to do it. Um, any other feedback on, um, Fourth of July or Community Day? I would say look for the, um, for that to be on our July, oh, no, I'm sorry, in our June agenda. And, uh, between now and then, um, we'll certainly put some more time into some alternatives.
Alright.
Police report, Phoenix on the call? Um, let's see if he's muted. Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you, Chief. How are you?
Good, how are you? Uh, just a couple things, um, I'm happy to report to the commissioners that Officer Corcoran Schultz successfully completed their required one-year probation period on, uh, April 22nd. It's hard to believe it's been over a year already. I think we have two fine individuals. They did excellent in their FTO program. They're, they're doing very well. They'll continue to grow and we'll continue to monitor, uh, but they, they're two good, very good hires. With that being said, I assigned Officer Schultz to the Shay Cog Accident Reconstruction Team. She'll respond with the Shay Cog team that if there's a serious accident in any of the Shay Cog communities, she's going to be partnering with them to go and, and, um, investigate accidents. Uh, that'll put, we'll have members on the CERT team for Shay Cog, uh, the Accident Recovery Reconstruction Team and the Support Team. So we're, we're very involved in, in the Shay Cog, uh, grouping moving forward. And she's doing very good with that. As far as the, uh, COVID-19 update, our calls are down still. We have had, um, in April alone, 326 hours of previously scheduled training canceled. April was a huge month for training, so, um, you know, we're going to try to make up some of those hours towards the end of the year. It depends on when they reschedule them, but for, just for April alone, we've lost 326 training hours. The Lexipol process, the, the, uh, we entered into an agreement in January with Lexipol to try to redo our, um, policy manual. We're about 15 meanings into it now. It's moving slowly but surely. It's a, it's a great company and, in partnership with them. Uh, they're really trimming off some of the fat of the older, um, policy manual and, uh, kind of conforming it to what we do here in the township more. The body work, the body worn camera grant, I can't remember if I told you last month that we were awarded that grant. So we're in the process right now, uh, Joe, Paula Wood, and myself. We have to, the only thing left to do is we have to sit down and go over the specs for a, um, secure server for the data that we'll be storing. And as soon as we do that, we'll order, um, the equipment and, and have our guys go through the training. And I'm thinking by late summer, we will have the body cameras, um, set up and ready to go. Other than that, uh, we're keeping in, in, um, you know, the guidelines of CDC with responding and dealing with the public. Our officers, when they come to work, they open, um, a temperature by a no, non-contact infrared digital thermometer at the beginning of each shift. We have had no problems with that so far, but if any of the officers read 100.4 degrees or higher, they'd be sent home as a precaution and be directed to follow up with their primary care physician. But we have had no issues with that, so, um, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions for Chief Phoenix?
I do, Chief, is that in the 100.4, the CDC guideline currently?
Yes.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's the, the CDC guideline, 100.4 degrees.
Lisa, Commissioner Relo, anything else that you want to follow up with? I didn't want to change the subject, I'm sorry.
No, I just, my work, we're using a different number, but we'll probably be a little bit more restricted.
Is it lower? I wanted to also, related to, um, public safety, uh, you know, looking at the chief's report and thinking about those 326 hours of, of training that is getting canceled, really led us to, to make, uh, a decision here. We had some dialogue with you last month about a, um, a virtual reality training package that the chief had, had, um, researched. And with the, uh, the grant that he spoke of for the body cameras, that freed up some money in our capital budget as we were anticipating, um, purchasing those body cameras, um, for the officers. So we made an executive decision here, and I hope you guys are okay with it, want to disclose it, that, um, we've moved ahead with a, uh, a package that will allow the chief to, to train, um, his officers in a virtual manner, in a safe manner, um, and allocate the, the chunk of, chunk of money that we had in our capital budget dedicated for the body cameras, uh, to be placed towards, for this use. Uh, and, and we'll still be able to use the, the body cameras because of the grant. So I wanted to disclose that, because it is a pretty significant investment and a, a really good way for the, the officers to continue, be able to continue to train without having to have a lot of close interaction or contact.
Did you ever check into seeing if it was eligible for reimbursement under the COVID Federal Fund?
Yeah, so, uh, we've participated in a, a webinar about how to apply for reimbursement for those things, and there's a process that you have to go through. So I think basically what we'll do is we will, we will include it, um, as a request and see what we got, right? Uh, there, there was no hard or fast rule that we could, could find that would tell us if it is or isn't, um, available for reimbursement. But the message from the county was first, you know, there's a, a process just to, um, uh, get on, get into a system to, uh, notify them that you're going to submit, um, invoices or, or expenses, I should say, uh, for reimbursement. Uh, and then, you know, one, they have to be over $3,300, which we're, we're well over. So we'll include that as well as some other items and, um, just play the waiting game with, um, with if, if it's approved or not.
Okay.
What's the dollar amount on that, John? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Uh, so it will be spread out over two years, and I think total, it's about, uh, you forget, tell me if I'm wrong. I think it's 60,000 bucks?
Yeah, 15,000.
15,000?
30 out of capital this year, 30 out of capital next year?
That's the plan, right? Any questions on any of that, those items? Last department report.
Does that match the body camera? Is that an even exchange?
Yeah, body camera, the body cameras total, we're going to be, uh, approximately 50,000.
Yeah, so it's slightly more.
That doesn't include the cost of the server. I forget what the cost, this cost of the server was. But 50,000 for the body cameras. We had budgeted for.
And this is 60, but you're splitting it into two years?
Yes.
I'm totally in support of doing it, and I know I haven't been here last week, so if I missed, or last time I missed something, I do apologize. But I would like to bring up that I think we have to have a, a capital expenditure process that for big dollars and switches, it should go through some approval process. Again, if you guys did that last week, I certainly apologize, because I wasn't there available. But I would ask us to do that. Um, again, I fully support this, but I don't like the way in which it happened, if, if that makes any sense.
Yes.
Again, unless you guys all did it last week, that's my, that's, would be on me. But if we can just look at the capital expenditure process, where even if it's budgeted, that the request goes through, at least we're aware, we can all say yea or nay, any concerns? Um, those are some big dollars, um, and there's some variance there, so I would just ask, ask that in the future.
Yeah, I understood. Um, the, the chief did submit to me some type of justification. Um, I, I'll be happy to, um, share that with you, and, um, we can refine that process so that, you know, moving forward, we can, you know, be on the same page. Really, what we wanted to do was just try to avoid, um, all these trainings that are getting canceled. We really wanted to make sure that the, the forces.
I totally don't, do not disagree with what, what happened.
Yeah, no, I get it.
I want to look at the process, because I think it's just, um, better for us in our servant roles that we have a pretty tight process with any kind of capital expenditures, especially in those kind of dollars. That's all.
Okay, sorry about that.
Can we move to Public Works? Are there additional questions, uh, for the chief?
I don't have any.
Time for me.
Public Works report, I'll give it. I know that Butch is not on the call tonight. Their activity reports listed there, and- Their activity reports listed there and, and, uh, you know, feel free to go through it. We have, they have been, um, incrementally ramping up their, their time and their, their work. We're still, um, you know, keeping one man in a truck and, uh, we provided all workers with masks and gloves and, and they're working independently the best they can. It's allowed, it's allowed us to really do a lot of, uh, work in the parks, especially on the, on the trail. And they're, they're staying on top of mowing. One thing that I wanted to, um, make sure that the board was in alignment with me on was, while their, their working, um, has, has been ramped up, this is typically the time when we would, uh, hire summer aides, uh, to do grass cutting and other maintenance, mostly in the parks. Usually we hire around 10, uh, and have hired as many as 12, um, high school and college kids, uh, to, to work. That program, um, my recommendation is that we, um, continue to take applications for it, but not make any hiring moves until we're in that green phase. Largely because, um, that, those group of, of young adults generally work in, in groups more, more so than independently. We don't normally permit them to drive, so they're in, they, they were in vehicles with, uh, with Public Works. And I think it would just be a, uh, challenge for us to, uh, to adequately distance and keep everyone safe. So I think we, you know, we're, we're hopeful that we can continue that, that program. If we get into the green, hopefully that's at a time, um, in the not-too-distant future. But I just don't think we can, um, start as we typically would, which would be right around, uh, you know, the, the third, fourth week in May. I think we need to, to wait a little bit until we, we have some clarity. I wanted to make sure everyone was, was aware of that. Everyone good there? Any other questions for Public Works or for, um, any of the, um, departments?
What does Public, what does Public Works look like now? Like, have they expanded? Have they started doing additional tasks? Have they added, as far as like the Rose Program, has that started opening up through?
Yeah, so the, you know, the construction opening back up and, and their ability to get, um, you know, hot asphalt has allowed them to, um, uh, to do more patching, right? So that, that we have been aggressively doing patching. They've been doing roadside mowing, keeping up with the rights of ways, um, cleaning out inlets. They've been, uh, troubleshooting with, with Andy and with John Kanaski on, uh, a lot of our, stormwater complaints that we've gotten over the last couple of weeks. And they've also helped out with the evaluation of the road program that we're gonna look at later tonight. When I look at their, the workforce and their, um, the numbers that they're putting in, it, it continues to hover around that 30 to 34 hours per week in terms of hours worked that these guys are, are, are putting in. So we're still not quite at 100%, but it's, it's, it is, it is advancing, um, each and every month. Do we want to move on to old unfinished business?
John, are you doing temperatures of the Public Works guys too?
We haven't been. No, we don't, um, I, I know that the chief got his hands on, on that, um, touch-free thermometer, but, uh, we don't have, uh, but we don't have one. We should, we, we would need to do that. We, we haven't.
And I just think we should, it's not bad to consider just making.
Yeah, it's a good practice.
Protocol for anyone that's working currently?
Yeah, um, when I get in the office tomorrow, I'll work, I'll get with the chief on, on where you ordered that from. Maybe we can get another one for Public Works. They, they have one that they use to measure temperature of the roadways, uh, in the winter. And we did try that, but it, it's not an accurate reading, can't be really used on, on humans. Everyone was coming up at like 80 degrees.
They're more than welcome to use ours. I mean, they can stop over, you know, we can do it for them.
Okay. Well, if nobody has anything else, let's move on to unfinished business. All right, item A, discuss and consider F-12, F-12-18 Koski subdivision and consolidation, final minor subdivision, Odoke Road zoned R2 request for an extension of the approval.
Okay. Andy, would you mind walking us through this if you could?
Sure. This is a subdivision that was approved in February of 2019. And I don't know why, but it, it sat on the applicant's desk and never got recorded. Under the municipality's planning code, it has to be reported within 90 days of the approval date or the county recorder deeds will not accept it. So I'm not sure if it got that far, but somewhere on the line, Mr. Koski realized, uh-oh, I've, I've not made the 90-day deadline. So he has submitted a, a new set of plans, same drawing as before, but fresh signatures, fresh notarizations. And, uh, we simply need to reapprove it so that he can get the thing reported within 90 days.
90 days of after, after it's voted upon?
Correct. And I, I've attached there the, uh, approval letter from February 25th of 2019. Really, the only thing of note is that, that a waiver was requested for iron pins instead of concrete monuments.
Sorry, I was pulling that up.
Hey, Andy, it's, it's Bob. Um, I have some familiarity with this and a lot of times all you just gotta put in is a reapproval stamp on the original plan that was signed off and they usually accept that.
Bob, there wasn't a, um, a space on that. The surveyor that had prepared this had not put that clause on there. I thought by the time we get it back to him and get new signatures, it would be just as easy. This came in last Monday, I believe.
Yeah.
They have this thing reapproved and off to the races before we'd even get it back.
Yeah, I was just trying to avoid him having to run around, get signatures and, you know, stamps and all that fun stuff.
He didn't do it last time though, doesn't he need to do it?
I don't know that this has ever been signed before, Bob.
Okay.
I, I don't think it was a failure to record. I think it was a failure to actually produce the Mylar.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Not me.
Not me.
And is there a motion to approve Koski subdivision consolidation, um, request for extension of approval?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's move on to new business. Item A, discuss and consider a motion to approve a 30-day extension to complete the due diligence for the Township's potential purchase of Inner Care Properties Incorporated, property located on Hickory Grade Road.
Bob, you want me to take this or is there anything that you wanted to, to start by?
Pretty simple. We were under contract to purchase this property. We had a 90-day due diligence period. We thought in light of some concerns that we might have in, in terms of site development, that we needed an additional 30 days that was permitted under the contract. So we exercised that right last week by sending a letter to, uh, Inner Care Properties, which was acknowledged, received by them. And so we're on, uh, due diligence timetable to complete, I think, is June 11th. And then if we move forward with purchasing the property, it would be 30 days thereafter.
And you guys might probably recall that CEC, uh, was retained to help us through that process. We did get from them, um, a report that, uh, their geotech Nicole engineer put together for us, looking at the, at the soils. And after we, a call that, uh, Bob, myself and Andy had, um, with them, they provided us with, uh, some options of, of building placements, uh, trying to take advantage of, uh, avoiding, uh, differentials in soils. I guess if the, depending on where the buildings, uh, what they're looking to avoid is, is a foundation that's half in cut, half in fill. They don't want to have to use caissons. Uh, so they came up with, with some different scenarios. And we asked them to prepare an opinion of probable costs for the site work related to each of those options. We did get that just today. So I think a good next step would be, um, for us to maybe hold an executive session, um, in the coming, you know, week or weeks of, um, to, just allow us to, uh, identify what those, those site costs would be. And this way we know if we want to pull the trigger to, to purchase it. I don't necessarily think we would need the full 30 days, you know, we, we got that info today. But I, you know, I think it's, it's wise that we, um, you know, take this step today to, to get the extension. But, um, we, we should get together as a group. Um, it is real estate. Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, we can, we can use an executive session to, uh, to go through that.
Correct.
You're not prepared to do that tonight?
Well, the only thing, uh, not tonight, only reason being, um, the numbers that they sent over to us, they asked to have them verified by their geotech. We haven't gotten that verification yet. So might as well wait until we have absolutely everything we need from them. It should only be another day or two. So I'm thinking, you know, and, and in between our, our regularly scheduled meetings, if we are able to, uh, convene an executive session on it, shouldn't take terribly long. I could even get some of this information out to you guys in advance. But I think for the time being, well, let's exercise this extension and then, um, work towards, uh, getting comfortable with, with the costs.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody have anything on that?
Not right now.
All right, then do I have an emotion? Do, is there a motion to approve a 30-day extension to complete the due diligence for the Township's potential purchase of Inner Care Properties located on Hickory Grade Road?
I'll make that motion to go an extra 30 days extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item B, discuss and consider a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-09 to extend the period to pay real estate taxes at a discount until August 31st, 2020, and to waive any fees or penalties for payment of real estate taxes, provided that payment in full is made by December 31st, 2020, in accordance with Act 15 of 2020.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just, John, make sure you get a signed copy to this to the tax collector immediately.
I will. I, I spoke to him today when he, when he presented me with the, um, the refund list about this. Um, so he was aware of the, of the resolution and, um, and, you know, he'll, he'll adjust his schedule accordingly.
Okay.
Wait, can we post this on the website too? Just letting everybody know that we're going to extend the tax deadline for everyone?
Yeah, I think we should try to promote it. Uh, in addition to the website, you know, I think we can use social media to make folks aware that this exists. I'm not 100% positive, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe then the districts do the same as far as extending the discount period and, and penalty, waiving penalty for the year.
The school district?
Yeah.
No.
No, they did not. Well, their bills haven't gone out yet, but.
Right, they'll have that, they'll go out after ours.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's move on. Item C, discuss and consider a motion to advertise an ordinance establishing stop intersections at the intersection of Newbury Highlands and Gromwell Lane, Newbury Highland and Celebration Circle, and Celebration Circle and Gromwell Lane.
This request came to us, um, from the Newbury HOA. These are roadways. Let me get the map up for you guys. Here's a picture of it. Uh, these are roads that the Township adopted last month and that are included in our 20, will be included in our 2020 road program. So obviously those roads were never finished and we went through that previously. Stop signs were never installed as well, or at least not fully installed as well. It looks as if, um, the way those roads and traffic were set up that these should have been, you know, always stops, um, when they were installed, but that, that didn't occur. So because of the volume of these, I think they're, they're, the red, the red indicates an existing stop sign. The yellow is proposed, so there's one, two, three, four, five new stop signs proposed. Um, in talking with Bob, um, he recommended that, um, we pass an ordinance just getting these stop signs officially on our books. Now that the roads are ours as well, that'll allow the, the, the department, the police department with the ability to enforce these. So tonight it would just be a, a motion to advertise and then next month we'd bring it to you for adoption. And then when the road is completed with pavement is, is likely when we'd install the stop signs.
I'd make the motion to advertise.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, discuss and consider a motion to approve the entry into an easement agreement with Columbia Gas of Pennsylvania on Township property located on Adolumm Drive.
Yeah. Bob, you've been working on that more so than I. Do you want to touch base with what's going on there?
The area. I know it's adjacent to a park and there's a diagram that's, uh, placed up on the screen right now. Columbia Gas needs to install a new line, uh, new service line. And has asked the Township if they would be willing to grant an easement in order to accomplish this. I think, John, you had, uh, Public Works take a look at this and say, and they indicated to you that would not impact anything that may or exist or be planned in that area?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, the, the, the park property that sits on is, is behind preservation parks. So it's at the very end of it. Um, it's not active park space or anything like that. Um, just really wooded area.
So Columbia Gas has approached the Township requesting the Township grant them this right of way to install this, uh, service line.
Are they giving us anything in exchange for it?
No, that's, that's the one thing. It's, um, they're taking, I asked that question to them and they say, um, generally the consideration is between a public entity and in a PUC entity that they, they grant these. I said that that question might come up. I prepared them for that.
Well, you, you've, have you've done, you've done this before. Is that customary?
Traditional, let's put it that way.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve entry into an easement agreement with Columbia Gas?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item E, discuss and consider F-02-20, final approval of Lafayette Meadow Phase 2, plan of lots zoned R1.
Andy, can you give us a quick briefing on this?
Sure. Uh, Lafayette Meadow was, was approved, I believe, late 2018. And, um, it was always contemplated that it would be a multi-phase plan. This is the second phase. I'm looking to see if I can tell you the number of lots. But, um, I see Pat Cooper's on. If, if you have any questions, maybe we could get him to, to chime in. But, um, there's a few conditions there. So this, um, this would be a, a conditional approval. But, um, the sewage plantings in place, the, uh, the entrance coming off of, uh, Battle Ridge Road is in place. Should be fairly straightforward.
It's consistent with what the board would have seen previously, right?
It is, it is.
I'd make a motion to approve it, the plan.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, discuss and consider approving a conditional use application, CU-02-20 Piazza Properties LLC for proposed development on Miller's Run Road.
This is related to the hearing we had earlier. So again, their process would be conditional use, uh, land development. I believe there's also a need for, uh, multiple variances. So the, they're beginning with the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board later this month. The, the conditional use was already recommended approval, um, from the Planning Commission. You know, we had a hearing, we, we did post it. Uh, we haven't gotten any, any comments to the contrary. So I think you guys are safe with, um, with approving the conditional use if you, if you so wish. You will have an opportunity, there will be an opportunity to review the details of the plan in the, in the coming future. This is really just for its use as a, a planned shopping center.
I'd make a motion to approve the unconditional use application.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
John, it should be subject, it should be subject to.
Subject to the UPMC.
Yeah, yeah, shared parking agreement. The word, they're gonna need that for the, uh, land development approval for this and also the conditions that are set forth in the MITAL review letter.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And that, nothing should give anybody any hard, real hard burn here.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve subject to the conditions. Okay, so we need a motion to approve subject to the conditions.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, discuss and consider waiving the fees for the land development and grading permit for the Gladon Treatment on behalf of the South Fayette Conservation Group.
I think everyone's familiar with the project. This is an acid mine drainage project. The Conservation Group is a nonprofit. Really, they secured a grant for the the facility. So as a nonprofit, and being that the the project has a lot of community benefit, we wanted to support their request for the fee waiver.
Okay, is there a motion to approve an agreement or approve waiving the fees for the land development and grading permit for the Gladon Treatment?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, discuss and consider a motion to approve agreement with the South Fayette School District to provide a school resource officer for three years.
The proposal in front of you would have the same terms as our existing agreement, just extended three more years, so the the share on the cost is 70-30, 70 to the school district, 30 for the township, for the SRO at the at the high school.
They're not thinking about changing the officer, are they?
They don't have the authority, that's all up to the chief and what the chief decides on what's best for his department.
Okay.
And that doesn't get, that doesn't have anything to do with the agreement. The agreement just says that we'll provide a resource officer and your costs.
I'll make the mo, a motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, discuss and consider approving deduct change order to eliminate remaining work from 2018 contract number DPW-01-18, 2018 Road Improvements Program.
So just a quick summary, the next two items, I and J, relate to our our open contracts with our paving contractor for the 2018 and 19 road program. For our program this year, we got support from a consultant engineer, Lennon Smith Solaray, and their recommendation was to just formally close out those those two contracts. We are going to address the roads within those contracts, but in a, in a new contract, so we're not juggling multiple, multiple contracts. So I and J go together, we're just going to ask you to to terminate both of them.
Okay, well, then, do we have a motion to approve items I and J, both discussing or approving change orders to eliminate remaining work from the 2018 and 2019 contracts for Road Improvement Program?
Make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item K, discuss and consider a motion to award contract number DPW-01-20-2020 roadway install sewer improvements to Youngblood Paving for an amount not to exceed $2 million per LSS, LSSE bid report letter dated May 13th, 2020, and is recommended by the township engineer.
So a lot going on there. We opened bids this week on Monday, and initially, we had two separate contracts that were out the bid, one for paving and one for seal code, which we had traditionally done in the township. At Lennon Smith's recommendation, they asked, they asked that we not just send that a bid for the the seal code, but also think about a replacement for seal code. I know that that is something that doesn't always get met with open arms by residents. It can be a messy project. It also is hard to do a lot of seal coating because it's so weather dependent. I think you guys might remember, remember towards the end of last year, we were really scrambling to get some, some roads seal coated, and there needs to be consecutive days of dry weather and temperatures above a certain degrees, which makes it hard. So they bid as an alternate a process that would be, I call it like a a micro paving, which would be like a scratch coat and then just a one inch layer of paving, which is probably an in-between, the mill and pave, and, but, but an upgrade from the seal coat. And the numbers we got were just incrementally higher than the seal coat. So the recommendation we have is to not award any contract for the seal coating, but to do the the one inch overlay on the roads that were identified for a seal coat, and that would allow us to, to not be so dependent on whether we think we'll get a larger chunk of of the roads done and will allow us to be really aggressive with with paving.
What kind of repairs are they going to do before you put that wear coat on?
Yeah.
You're talking an inch and a half, right, John?
Yep, yep.
And they're going to do extensive repairs where it needed, where it needs to be?
Yeah, Andy, can I ask you to address that? Do you have a thought on 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 the base repairs and how that applies?
It needs base repair, they will be doing that, yes. These are only streets that are, for the most part, in in fairly decent shape. A lot of the roads that have been tarred and chipped in the past, that's all they have ever been. Some of them have asphalt underneath that, but if there is base repair needed, yes, you're right. It it makes no sense to do a one inch overlay on something that's not structurally sound.
Right, now, are they going to do catch basin repairs too before they do that? Or all the, okay, that's all included in that?
It is.
Okay.
So I see the recommendation is for Youngblood. I don't see any other bids that were on here. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, we had Youngblood last year who did a very poor job. They didn't complete what they needed to do. I believe we also used them in 2018. They didn't finish that project list, which caused us to be significantly backlogged in our road programs, and yet I have a recommendation to approve them again to do our roads?
I know, that gave me some pause too. You know, if you remember though, the 18 and 19 contracts, the parts that Youngblood really fell down on were the the tar and chipping, right? Like the, we had just a handful of roads that were milled to be milled and paved, and they knocked those out. And then the tar and chipping seemed to to complicate things for them. It was a different crew, different equipment, and we were just having a hard time getting them on site.
It was beyond that. They were not compliant, they didn't follow through with OSHA, they left place, they left the place a mess. They did not follow the rules that they were supposed to. Whenever they were out doing the road projects, they, they didn't have anybody on site. I, I mean, I just have a real problem with giving a contract to somebody like this. So what was the difference to the next contract out? Like, who were the other bidders? Was there a significant difference in price? Are we required to take the lowest bidder?
You know, I had a discussion, Andy and I had a call with with Lennon Smith about that, just in terms of, does their past performance make them not unqualified bidder? And unfortunately, I don't think that that it does.
Even if they didn't complete, and we have to do change, we have to do change orders for two previous years where they didn't complete what they were supposed to. So then they come through, we do this year, they don't finish things again, we get backlogged even further.
Well, we've, we've.
They deserve better at this, I mean, they they deserve better at this point.
This is a much tighter contract than we've had in years past, and we are, you know, ready to implement the the penalty clause, the liquidated damages clause immediately. We think that because we're doing a lot of paving and because of the size of this contract, they've, they've said to us that they're going to start right away. So we do have every reason.
Are they, I mean, what makes, what makes us their priority? Because we weren't their priority before, and they said they had jobs in other places, and they'd get to us when we could. That's not acceptable.
I think what we're going for us right now is just that we're, we seem to be ahead of of most other communities in terms of having a project ready to go. I know a lot of, a lot of communities were delaying the bidding, and we're thinking of reducing programs due to fear of lost revenue. So I think we're at the really front edge of this. So I think a combination of the large contract predominantly being milled and paved, lack of seal code, and having a third party like Lennon Smith on board, I'm confident we're going to get this done. I felt the same way you did, Commissioner Ready, and I initially went into this thinking we need to find the next, the next bidder on here. But, you know, our engineers seem to think that they're qualified, they've done satisfactory work in a lot of other communities. They've given us indication that we can go to pre-construction as soon as next week and be ready to go soon thereafter. So I'm trying to find the number for you of to where the.
Who were the other bidders, and what was the difference from?
I can chime in on that, John. The, the base bid for Youngblood was $1.2 million, $185. Mealy and Mealy and Sons was $1.284,000. So it'd be about $85,000 increase.
Right, very minimal.
Independent Enterprises was $1.289, and then Foligno was really high at $1.683. I will add that, I haven't spoken with them, but Kevin Brett from Lennon Smith Solaray did speak with Youngblood this week. They have not gotten any other significant projects yet this year. So they are hungry, they are ready, they are ready to hit the ground as soon as, I guess, we now have the ability under the state directors that they can start work.
They can, but our company is hungry too, because everybody's going to be looking for work, because a lot of municipalities are not as fortunate to be in the position that we are financially to be able to move forward with this. So everybody's going to be jockeying and vying for these projects. Everybody's going to want them.
What, what I heard today was that a lot of municipalities have held off on awarding their contracts because they're concerned about their revenue, and they don't have it set aside. They're planning to pay for it out of this year's tax revenues. So I think we're in a very good position.
After what I experienced and saw last year up in Kingsbrook with the Youngs blood, it was disgraceful, it was unacceptable, and it is nothing that we should ever expect from any of our contractors.
That was the the seal code, though, on on Kingsbrook, right?
It was, but, but that just speaks to.
I have to agree with, I, I kind of have the same concerns that Glenn has. Regardless of what the, what they were doing, I think their, their handling of it
Horrible.
was, was less than desirable.
Yeah.
I guess.
Well, maybe the question.
I want to go back to the question is, do we even have the opportunity to pick anything other than the lowest bid? First of all, that's question one. I wasn't sure I understood the answer to that.
That might be a question for, for the solicitor. I don't know, Bob, what, what are your thoughts on, on what needs to happen before we would exclude a low bid based on past performance?
So it's lowest responsible bidder has been commented on before. I don't know what to the extent we have real documentation, we have eyewitness, you know.
Me, Glenn.
And there's documentation to that as well. I mean, the emails that were going back and.
Yeah, I mean, you, I mean, in order, you know, to do that, in case this contractor wants to come after you, we need to have this very well documented, and email exchanges to them that our experience with them has been extremely poor.
I guess I'm curious, have they, you know, during this bid process, have they talked to any of our, you guys, about what they would be doing differently to give, I mean, have they even acknowledged that there was issues last year, and they have a plan, and they've demonstrated that to us? Other than, yeah, 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 we'd better, or, you know, what kind of analysis really is there? Or what have they kind of said? Because their response to us last year was pretty inappropriate, if I recall, until we intervened.
Absolutely, absolutely. That, and.
It was just very laissez faire, if I recall, and, you know.
It was.
That wasn't acceptable to us.
No, and then when I'm looking at items I and J, where we had to approve deduct change orders, and change orders, because they didn't accomplish what they set forth, promised to do in their prior contracts, and now we're going to give them a third chance? And there's no guarantees, I mean, there's no guarantees. They can tell us anything they want to tell us, but there's no guarantees that they will come back and do what they need to do. And their past performance speaks for itself, and we have to look at the reimbursements and the changes and the adjustments. And when we look at our own road program and how far behind we are, that we haven't been able to accomplish what we need to, because they didn't do their job. It was not a failure on anybody else's part but theirs. So, and they did not make up the priority at that time.
I get that, I mean, I, I'm not exactly sure of that legal answer. I mean, we, when I spoke with, you know, the consulting engineers, their, their pushback was their, you know, these are, they're PENDOT certified, and they've, they probably, you know, if challenged, would be able to say that they're, they're, shouldn't be excluded. But, I mean, I hear, I was disappointed with their performance as well, and, you know, I've shared that same kind of feeling. Based upon our limited interactions with them since this, this bid was presented to us, I do think that, you know, the size of it and the fact that it's, it's all paving, you know, they, they seem to be, Lennon Smith's words were, they, they put them up there as the top one or two paving outfits in the region. So I think by eliminating the seal code, we should be, and we didn't eliminate it just for them. We eliminated it because we think that the, the process, you know, it's messy and it gets a lot of complaints. So we wanted to find a way to kind of upgrade that.
Well, John, the asphalt paving is actually about 10% less than what we paid for seal coat for last year's contract. So we're getting a better job that'll last twice as long for less money.
The numbers are really good, they, they were really.
So if the board is inclined to move forward with them, there's a performance bond, correct?
Correct.
Right, so you have to have Lennon Smith and our own eyes and ears out there. And if things go haywire, we put a hard stop on it, and whatever additional money it costs us to go have this completed will be under the bond. So I, you know, it's one of those situations where it's question of the level of documentation that we have for the prior performance. And I don't know, from what I'm hearing, staff seems to be comfortable moving forward. If we're moving forward with them, they need to be carefully monitored. And if there's a problem, we put a hard stop on them, and then look at the performance bond if it's going to cost us money.
And we don't have, so we have no option to choose any of the other bidders?
Well, it's, it's a, it's, it's a significant event when you throw out the lowest, lowest bidder, and you have to make it very clear to them in writing why they were being, you know, dismissed, because they were not responsible, and then you award it to the, you know, the second lowest bidder.
I mean, I think at this point, we're willing to do what you guys suggest. I do, I mean, in a perfect world, we'd want to, we'd want to start early so we can finish. But I understand we want to make sure that we have the right people in place doing it. So I am, I am comfortable that with, you know, considerable oversight and with, you know, them being clearly aware of where we are, I, I do think we'll get it done. And look, I'm acutely aware of it, because, you know, I, I felt like, you know, we put all our eggs in their basket for two years, and if we do it a third year and it doesn't work out, we, you know, we really look, look bad. So I'm going to make sure we do everything on our end to hold their feet to the fire. However, if you guys want to pursue, you know, knocking them off and go to the next round, it may delay things, I'm not sure, but, you know, we're willing to, I mean, you know, we'll fight that fight if you want.
I don't think you want to throw all the bid, because we're so late in the season right now, I don't think you want to throw all the bids out and start over again.
No, that won't work, it's mid-May.
It's too late.
Too late.
I think if we go with them, I think it needs to be made very clear that there's going to be zero tolerance going forward. They are going to perform at the, at the highest level and at the level we expect without, you know, affecting our residents like they did last year. And at the minute that they don't perform or meet our expectations, then we're done.
Yeah, we call on the bond.
We did, we call on the bond, we get somebody else to do it, and they will never work at South Fayette Township again.
I agree, absolutely. All right, with all that being said, I'd make a motion. All right, with all that being said, I'd make a motion to approve the contract.
Well, I'm going to second it, given all those pretenses, because we don't really have another option other than A, go back out to bid, which from a time perspective makes no sense. Or B, probably put us in some type of legal predicament. And while we have some documentation, my guess is we probably don't have enough to support egregious malperformance. Which makes me go back to, how are we going to monitor it and how are we going to document, you know, poor performance with any contractor that comes into the township? Because I think we kind of probably do it willy nilly. Again, process, we might want to look at some kind of evaluation process for any work that's going on. So if we come to this situation again, we with a high level of confidence can say, we're not going to go with the lowest bidder because we have enough documentation to prove how horrible their performance have been in the past. So I feel we find ourselves in a pickle, but I will second it with those comments.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I just, I just want to be very clear going forward that they will be under the strictest, strictest monitoring. If that means I have to go on site and make sure that they're doing the job that they need to do, because we cannot have a recurrence of last year.
So I think the ask is, I would ask, I think the ask is what is our monitoring process, schedule, frequency, criteria, et cetera? So that we are on top of issues before the residents are upset about something and then, you know.
We do have a good plan in place there. We have, in addition to, you know, our staff that, that does construction inspection. We will have, Lennon Smith has a team of, of resident, RPRs they call them, which are construction inspectors as well. So we are paying a little more for inspection, but given the size of the project, we want, we thought it was important. So there will be a lot more.
So what will we, like, what cannot we look at to see that on an ongoing basis for the monitoring? Is there a schedule, their criteria?
That's right. Starting with the pre-construction meeting, we'll get their construction schedule on a weekly basis. We will get daily reports from those RPRs in terms of their activity. And, you know, we'll, we'll continue to monitor where they are with, with the contract and if we need to go into that liquidated damages phase.
I think one of the things that were an issue prior, Gwen, you have a better memory than I, was the notification of the residents about what was happening, if I recall correctly. So can we make sure that they have the appropriate notification for residents in a timely manner, et cetera?
And it was, it was just, it was just the way they did the entire job. They weren't following protocol. So, I mean, like, they didn't have, remember they didn't have the water.
There's some about parking and not knowing and something like that. So if you can just follow up, I would ask if it's at all possible. I mean, I'm not going to churn through pages and pages of reports and RPG yet, whatever the heck they're called. If you could do some kind of one-page simple summary that is easy for us to keep track of. I think that would be helpful for all of our confidence as well as any resident concerns that come through as soon as they come through.
Right.
So they need to be exquisite in customer service at this point with the residents, please.
Agreed.
All right, let's move on to public comment. Is there any public comment at this time?
I'm not seeing any hands up or anyone indicating they'd like to, to offer comment.
This time, is there any board discussion? I have one item. I received a phone call a couple of weeks ago from Senator Pam Iovino. Just calling to let us know that the township was awarded a $240,000 grant to do the Washington Pike Waste Road Stoplight and Intersection Improvement. So I know that's something we're going to be looking at moving, you know, forward as well. So I thought that was good news.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great news.
Great news.
The other thing related to that Commissioner Roddy is the other grant that was secured is through that similar program was for Alpine and, and 50, right? And that project initially was suspended with COVID, but recently was opened back up. So equipment's been ordered and that installation should be on target for, I would say, probably late summer, early fall.
I think another thing we need to talk about real quickly is, primary election is June 2nd. County Executive reached out, said that because of COVID, they are requesting that each municipality scale down their polling locations to one location per municipality. So at this time, I think we're just trying to figure out which is the best and it has to be one of our current polling locations, so.
Gwen, what's the rationale between going down to one location?
Because they're saying because of COVID, a lot of the senior people that work, typically work the polls are not comfortable. They don't want to work the polls. They've quit or they've resigned. And so they're finding it very difficult to find poll workers. And so because of that, they're requesting that we all go down to one.
Is it a request or is it a order? Because I don't agree with that at all.
It's a request.
Not to not be helpful, but from a logic perspective, they're still going to, we're condensing more people to one location. That puts more people at risk than it's something spread out. So, you know, from a COVID protection standpoint, I don't understand the logic or the rationale and I do not support that at all. If we need to get new volunteers, then I would put out the call for new volunteers or however that works. I know, you know, I don't know the details about that, but I do not support that, especially in a geographically spread community like ours.
I'm sorry?
Do we have a choice right now? Or was that, that came out?
That was my question. Did it choice or?
I was under the impression it was a request.
Well, I don't know that. I mean, I know that, that one of the things that they were also doing to try to encourage less people in the polls was really pushing the mail-in ballots. And I know that they've indicated they've, they've received a lot of mail-in ballots already. So they're trying to, they're trying to take some steps to limit the number of people that show up to vote. But I think the reason is, as Commissioner Roddy said, they just don't have a lot of poll workers or volunteers that, that are going to be available on June the 2nd.
And I think everybody else is aware too. It's not as simple as going into the polls and casting your vote this time. Your votes are not going to be counted and tallied the day of election day. They're going to take your ballots, if you vote in person, they're going to take them down to a central processing location and they're going to process them all. So I'm not even sure when we'll get the results of the election.
I guess I would like some more information from wherever this is coming from.
I don't know.
Although we don't have time, it's.
Don't have time, that's the problem.
Yeah, I did a little internet research today and I, I think didn't county council pass some kind of legislation that places only one polling location per jurisdiction? I don't think it's, I don't think it's just a, I don't think it's just a recommendation. I think they're just going to have one per and they're, they're letting the municipalities kind of identify the most appropriate place and their, their, one requirement is that it has to be an existing, a location that, that had been, has been used as a polling location. So, you know, initially we thought, you know, the municipal building and the senior center might be a location. However, you know, the school is also a location that serves as a, a traditional polling place. You know, that might be a situation that has more room, might be able to.
There's not enough parking at the municipal building.
Correct. And then try to stagger everybody six feet apart, standing in line. Where are you going to, where are you?
If we're truly talking to have some kind of flow with social distancing as safe as possible, because now we're stuffing everybody into one location. It's probably got to be the largest, which is the score. Fairing's not even good.
No.
From a parking flow perspective, so we don't really have any other options than the school.
Right. And my understanding is, I think traditionally at the school, they don't typically hold voting in the gymnasium or in the cafeteria, right? Isn't it in a, in a meeting room of some kind? So we would, we'd probably want.
Yeah, it's right in the band. It has its own entrance and exit. It's closed off to the rest of the school. So it is the ideal location if we were going to do this.
Well, I'd agree that a bigger location with more parking would be preferred, especially if there's just one. I did speak to someone at the county today just to make sure that we saw the ability to identify an alternate location. And just full disclosure, when they reached out to me previously, it was, it was kind of of the, with the message of can we have it at, at the township building? To which I initially said yes, but given, you know, the, the thought of having it somewhere larger, I did reach back out just to say, can we change that? And the answer is yes. So, you know, I think we probably should have someone from the school district, you know, concur with that recommendation. But it does seem logical to use the largest space we have available. There's, there's a chat message. Someone said that the county anticipates 75% of voters mailing in. So maybe there will be less people out, but, but even with that concentrated at one location, the, the municipal building just is small, right? And there's a lot of closed, closed doors and entrance ways. We don't have a lot of wide open space.
The municipal building, in my opinion, from a parking and traffic perspective, is not safe.
Yeah, I think Oak Ridge could be a backup. I mean, with the, the new space they have up there, I mean, it's a lot more open than the municipal building.
And that, is that a traditional polling location for the township?
That's mine.
Okay.
But what about parking, Joe? Because you have the whole township going there, not just Oak Ridge voters.
I know, but I mean, unless they all came at once, there's a lot of parking. I mean, it wouldn't be ideal, but still better than the municipal building.
I think the school is the best option because the openness and the space, if people had to be in line outside, there's, there's at least more space there. That's not into a parking lot. There's a lot of sidewalk space there. So I would say from a safety perspective and a social distancing perspective, that school is the best place if they're okay with that.
Yeah, I would agree. I was just saying as an alternate, maybe.
Well, I think I'm hearing you say we should, our priority should be first to just make sure the school's on board. I can call the superintendent or if there's a better contact and then reach back out to the county to say, please include that address with your materials on where people can vote.
Right. And then let's try to get this wrapped up as soon as possible and then we can post on our website and Facebook and everywhere else as well too, so that everybody is aware. So we don't have people going to all the different polling locations.
So there's, you're, you're saying that there's a county, county order.
I've got a lot, I've got a lot.
I still like to understand that, just so I understand.
I thought it was something that county council had, had taken action on from what I read today. But I would say if, you know, if the school was, is a traditional spot, they, they should have been prepared to, to host voting anyways, right? So it's not, it's not a tall ask, right? It's, it's probably something.
Sadly, because it already is, it's already an existing polling location. Okay. We'll check into, we'll check into it tomorrow, see if we can get any clarification on that. If it is, if that is the case, then we'll move forward with, I think we approached the school anyways and just request that that be the polling location for South Pat.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, poll's not in session. There's really nothing happening up there anyways, so.
Yeah, it was actually, it's here. Did you look it up? Well, go ahead, keep going.
I did. No, I just, I sent a text out to our councilman to ask him. Lisa, are you still looking it up?
I've been just reading. I mean, it did exist. It exists, so. Okay, what's next?
Okay. That's all. Any other board discussion?
No, thanks.
And we'll move on to manager's report.
Yeah, my report's provided for you on the link on the website. Looking through the links, I believe we covered all of them tonight. A lot of it was meant just to give depth to the agenda items. The things that I really wanted to get some feedback on were the 4th of July and Community Day activities that were scheduled. So please maybe give that some thought. That'll be in front of us and at our, our next month's meeting. But between now and then, hopefully we get some clarity on it. I did want to mention that Waste Management is now officially back up and running at full capacity. So all the restrictions that were in place for, for, for waste removal and recycling are now lifted. Bulk pickups have resumed. We did get a yard waste pickup already in, in the books. So that's good to hear. When you look at the request tracker that's there as well, you see a lot of the calls were for, for trash. They basically were due to the restrictions that they had in place that are now lifted. So that should make everyone a lot happier. The only other thing on my report that we didn't touch on during the meeting tonight is our ongoing search for Assistant Manager Finance Director position. We're continuing to keep the search open. I also want to time it such that we can conduct interviews safely in a face-to-face manner. So I'm thinking for the time being, we keep it open, maybe look to extend to the end of the month for applications and then see where that, that takes us in the month of June. But unless there's questions of me, I don't really have much else to, to report to you guys.
I have Councilman Catina on the phone. I'm going to, I'm going to put him on speakerphone so he can go ahead and give us what the guidelines are for primary day.
Great.
All right, Councilman Catina?
Yes?
Okay, you're on our Zoom meeting with South Pat Township.
Okay, thank you very much. Basically, what Allegheny County has requested of the state, obviously due to the COVID-19 pandemic, there's a shortage of poll workers at the various locations. So what Allegheny County requested of the state is that we were consolidating our pool locations. The actual, the elections board actually voted on it about three weeks ago and sent that request in. And basically they're requiring, or they're asking that each municipality have one location and the city of Pittsburgh will have a location in each of their obviously council districts. In some of the bigger municipalities, I am hearing that they possibly might be allowing two locations, possibly three. But like I said, that's, I haven't confirmed that yet. I've heard that they're requesting, municipalities are refusing that request because obviously there is some concern about having a place large enough that would be, that would be, that wouldn't throw the parking problem or what have you. I know I was on the South Pat, or actually the Scott Township meeting, or meeting last night. And they're actually suggesting two locations for the. And they're actually suggesting two locations for the elections bureau to look at, two churches for the elections bureau to look at. So I, you might want to consider one or two locations for the elections bureau to look at possibly. And see if they're, see if they have the staffing for, um, those two polling locations. But basically, I think they're just trying to cut down the number of polling locations. Just because, uh, if you think about it, most of the staff at the polling locations are obviously seniors. And the seniors, unfortunately, and we don't want to put them at risk, unfortunately. And we're urging people that they use, obviously, request their ballots through the mail-in process since we have mail-in voting this year. Um, and you can request, everyone should have received that actually an application that was sent from the county for a mail-in ballot. So if you fill that, if you fill out that application, you can actually get a ballot and vote by mail. Um, so we're encouraging that, obviously. Uh, but I know a lot of people still like to go to the polls and still, still, feel, feel, feel safe that way. Uh, so those are the options right now. It's either mail-in or limited locations for when we have the primary in here.
Okay. Because of the size of South Fayette, we would like to have two. So what would we, what would we do? We would go ahead and we would request that through the, um, county elections board?
Yes, you would request to the county, you would identify two locations and see if, I mean, see, I don't know how many poll workers are available at this point. If the poll workers are available, the, the county will try their best to accommodate. So obviously the size, let's say the size, obviously if South Fayette gives something, that you need to take into consideration. So I mean, I can't guarantee that you might, that you might get a word of the two locations. There's definitely other ones. But if you put in the request for possibly two, or, or, and maybe even three, if that's what you want to do. I mean, if the elections, if they can do that, the elections department, they most likely will.
Thank you.
All right. So anybody, does anybody have any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Councilman Catina, for joining us tonight.
You're very welcome. If there's anything else, just feel free to reach out to me. Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Bye-bye.
So the second, second, um, location that you'd like to consider, is that the building or somewhere different?
I'm sorry. What'd you say, John?
So if we're looking at two locations, what would you, I'd like to see, maybe spread them out on either side of the township then, and maybe by.
It seems like Fairview and.
Fairview?
School.
Fairview and the school.
Yes. John, did they give you any indication on timeframes for this too? I mean, we're three weeks away.
They basically said this, the quicker the better. But I did get in touch with, who I believe is the right person to at least get it logged on to whatever master list they have of polling locations. Um, I spoke with that gentleman today. So I think if I get to him in the morning with two locations, we'll be in, in good shape.
If there's nothing else, then, uh, solicitor's report? We can't hear you, Bob.
I don't have anything further this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any executive session this evening?
Not this evening, no.
All right. Well, then, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I wonder if Phil Price is really at the beach right now.
Seriously?
Took me a long time to figure that out.
Just another day at the beach, Commissioner.
I'm doing none of my work. I have my work, I'm doing none of my first, first work Zoom meetings tomorrow.
There you go.
All right.
Bye.
Everything.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for. Be safe.